We welcome you, ladies and gentlemen, in the live audience here as well as those who are watching over HCTV. We're pleased to have you with us tonight as we deliberate the issues here before us. Our invocation and pledge tonight, the person who will lead the invocation will be introduced by Councilmember Bob Hurley. And if you will, ladies and gentlemen, let's stand for that invocation and for the pledge to follow.
I'd like to invite my son, Bob Hurley III, to give the invocation place.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for everyone that's present. We thank you, Father, for the council people for taking their time to come represent the people of the city, to be concerned of the needs of the people of the city. Thank you, Father, for the people that are here that have concerns about their city. And, Father, we just pray that you would help each person to make the right decisions about each and everything, to have a clear mind, a clear heart, and that all things will be best for all. Father God, we pray this in the name of Christ our Lord and Savior. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, the first item on the agenda tonight is a presentation to be made by Fran Burns regarding the Keep Texas Beautiful Awards. Fran, if you will come forward at this time and make your presentation.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I want to tell you how much I appreciate your letting us come on behalf of the Board and make these announcements. We have some good news. As you might know, each year the Halton City Beautification Board enters the competition for Keep Texas Beautiful and the Governor's Community Achievement Award. And two years ago, we won the Governor's Award, and because of that, we were awarded landscaping funds. And I think you probably have noticed the area on Bellknap Street that's been improved by the Birdville Stadium. This year, we enter a course again. We didn't win. We were eligible to win this year, but we did not win. But we like to think that by doing the activities in the different areas of beautification and recycling, public awareness, education, and there's seven different areas that we have to do activities in, that we're improving the community. So even though we don't win money, we are winners. And I'm going to, if it's all right with you, I'd like to pass out copies of our application this year so that you can be aware of what we've done.
Thank you, Fran.
And the good news is, although we didn't win the Governor's Award and the money that goes with it, we did enter a couple of other categories. One of them was for education. And I'm pleased to say that the Board Education Program was named as a third-place winner throughout the state, and we were lumped in with cities the size of Houston and Dallas and San Antonio, so to come in third is pretty good. And the best news is, we entered our own David Soriano in his activities in programming for HCTV, and he was named first place in Media Awards Cable Access. So on Thursday night, David's going to be coming with us to the convention, which this year happens to be in Fort Worth at the Worthington Hotel, and he will receive his award at the Don't Mess with Texas Dinner. But tonight, I'd like him to come forward so that we can at least recognize him, get him on camera. David, we congratulate you and we thank you for everything you've done for our Board.
I'd like to thank Fran had a lot to do with this, as well as Lisa Newsom and David Harper, who did the narration on the video, also played a big role in this.
Thank you very much, Fran. And David, we're very proud of both of you. We come now to address the consent agenda, and these items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and self-explanatory. An approval of the consent item authorizes the city manager to implement each item in accordance with the staff recommendations. We'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Everett?
Mayor, I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda with items number seven, 11, and 12 being pulled for discussion.
Was item number eight to be included in that motion?
Yes. Was that correct, seven, eight, 11?
Seven, eight, 11, and 12.
Okay, yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes, sir. I'd like to second that motion with the addendum that we make note of item number nine, where we're going to remove the responsibility from the signage from the mayor's office and place that on the Director of Public Works or Park, excuse me, Parks Department.
Okay.
And we can include that with my motion.
Okay. Councilmember Hurley?
That was for a second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? If you will, gentlemen, cast your vote, and that passes by unanimous vote. I'd like for us to address items number 11 and 12, and then we'll come to item number seven and eight in just a moment. Councilmember Patino had asked that item number 11 be pulled off the consent agenda and discussed under separate action. Councilmember Patino?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason I asked this item to be pulled, I'm kind of concerned about all these vehicles being taken home. I'm not saying, and I'm not even trying to attempt to say that there's something not properly, or there's something wrong going on. It was based mainly on the information that was furnished by our manager, and all the information that got out, I feel that the justification is very limited. And also based on the inter-office memorandum from our section 12-05 budgeting for take-home vehicles, and it reads, "Each department which authorizes take-home vehicles must submit a take-home vehicle proposal to the city manager during the annual budget process. The department must use prudent management practices and citywide response priorities as the basis for the department proposal. The proposed child include the following information: info, name, title, position, vehicle number, make and model, reason for authorization, and specific detail, equipment and material to be carried in the vehicle." And all of this I have not seen, so I'm making a motion that part of it be approved at 26-mile radius. But I would like to make a motion that I stop during audit, and that the policy to take-home vehicle will remain the same until the audit is completed. I'll make that motion and...
Councilmember Hurley?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion, please. There being no discussion on the motion, gentlemen, if you will, register your vote, and that passes by unanimous vote. Items number seven and eight will be at, I'm sorry, Councilmember Patino, item number 12, the waiver of the false alarm fees. We do have a citizen here who wishes to speak on the subject, Dr. Brewer. Would it be okay, Councilmember Patino, if he addresses that before you make your presentation? Dr. Brewer, if you will, come forward and give us your name and address, and then you have five minutes.
Thank you. Mayor White, members of the council, Ms. Elfrink, members of the staff, it's my privilege to have this opportunity to come to express our appreciation on behalf of Virgil Independent School District of the council's decision some many years ago to develop a cooperative agreement for use of recreational facilities. It's served us well. During that time period, we've probably made some assumptions, both on the part of the city and on the part of the school district, that this agreement covered services and perhaps some areas that were not specifically expressed in the inter-local agreement. And I'm here representing the ISD to pledge our support to investigate other areas where we might be able to expand this policy for more efficiency and effectiveness of operation of both the city and the school district. But I do want to express my appreciation to you for starting that process several years ago, and we'd like to pursue that into the future.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Brewer. Councilmember Patino?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item 13, which deals with the waiver of false alarm fee to the ISD, after reading the memorandum from our manager, I see what this was, a discussion that decided that appears to be a verbal agreement going back to 1992, that it was extended by the city manager at that time, Linda Tedwell. Apparently, this unwritten policy was followed until the most recent of billing questions. On this memorandum, our manager says that we, the amount of fees that currently are in question are $2,100, the result of 42 false alarms. 42 false alarms tell me that somebody's been very negligent. Furthermore, I think we already, our city is observing approximately $116,000 for the school resource officers and $33,000 for school crossing guards. So I want to make a motion that the waiver of the false alarm fees be denied.
Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Is the chief available to come out for some questions, please?
Before we proceed, I do need a second on the motion.
I will, I will second that motion.
Okay. Proceed, please.
Thank you, Chief, for coming out. I've got a couple of questions for you. What does it normally take for the police department, once they arrive at the Shannon Center, to re-secure the building? And how many units do we send out? What kind of resources are we providing for this?
Generally, on any alarm call like that, we'll send a minimum of two units, and if there are more available, obviously, the size of the building will come into play as to what we, what we'll send. But at a minimum, we'll send two units. Both officers will secure the premise, and then they'll begin checking the exterior doors. And that sometimes, depending on the size, obviously, the building will take some time. If something's found open, then we'll attempt to contact someone who's key carrier for that building.
I don't know if, well, I don't know what seems to be the problem. Obviously, there's a problem at Shannon Center with the alarm system, because on several occasions, we have two alarms in the same day. Can you estimate how much time our officers are there? I mean, five minutes, 20 minutes?
On a school the size of Shannon Center, I would estimate probably 25 to 30 minutes minimum time.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Mayor. I have just a couple of questions, please, sir. One for our city attorney. Since, in looking over the memos that we've refurbished, this invoice was dated the 31st of January, does the ordinance that governs the false alarms, does it carry a clause of penalty and interest?
I'm not aware that it does.
Okay. So we're not able to charge penalty and interest, correct? Or we don't know at this point, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Going to my calculation, our police department's been there at Shannon Center on average eight point six, seven times every eight point six, seven days, once a week, basically. And that tells me they got a problem, and they need to pay the bill. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Anything further on the motion that we have before us? There being no further discussion, gentlemen, if you will, register your vote, and the vote carries by unanimous vote. Item number seven and eight will be addressed in executive session. We will convene into executive session at this time, which is 7:47 pursuant to section 551.074 personnel issues, and we will reconvene in open session before any action is taken in this regard. We now reconvene in open session to take action on items discussed in executive session. Gentlemen, we have item number seven on the agenda, the ordinance to give consideration on second reading to the approval of an ordinance appointing the municipal judge. Councilmember Patino?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 02001-033-03 to reappoint our judge.
Councilmember Jennings?
That's for a second.
Okay. Gentlemen, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the motion before us before the vote is taken? There being none, gentlemen, if you will cast your vote, we will register that at this The motion carries with Councilmember John Williams and Councilmember Bob Hurley voting in the negative. The motion carries. We move on to item number eight, ordinance number 0-2001-041-03, and that is to give consideration regarding the approval of an ordinance amending our current ordinance relating to the appointment of the municipal court judge. We'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to approve 02001-041-03.
Councilmember Jennings? Councilmember Markham?
Second.
Gentlemen, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? There being no discussion, if you will, register your vote at this time. And that carries with Councilmember John Williams voting in the negative. We come now to our public hearing section of our... We come now to the public hearing section of our agenda, and Mr. Elfrink, if you will, give us a summary of what we're about to do with these next five items, please.
Mr. Mayor, what we have at this time are five public hearings. The first one for conditional use permit. The others are for changes in zoning. I will comment only that our planning and zoning department has thoroughly reviewed each of these items, and they have been reviewed by our planning and zoning commission and have been recommended for approval to this body.
Okay. The first item is CU-008-01 to give consideration and/or take action regarding the application of a Shia Zayad LTR for a conditional use permit to operate an auto sales facility at 4530 East Bellknap. I open the public hearing at this time. I believe, Mr. LTR, you are here. Do you wish to address the council at this time, or would you prefer, in a moment, if they have any questions, answer those questions at that time?
Yes, sir.
Do we have anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Anyone in opposition? There being none, the public hearing on this item is closed, and we move now to the corresponding ordinance. Gentlemen, I will entertain a motion in this regard. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve ordinance number 0-201-034-15.
Councilmember Everett?
That's for a second.
Gentlemen, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions for Mr. LTR? There being none, if you'll register your vote at this time, that carries by unanimous vote. Item number 14 is Z-017-01, and that regards an application of Glenn Enos for a change in zoning from C3 to C5 on property located at 4533 East Bellknap. Gentlemen, a motion, please. Councilmember Jennings?
Mr. Mayor, I would ask that you open up the public hearing on that.
Yes, I just did.
Okay.
Just now, thank you. After you prompted me, thank you for that.
Well, I'll defer, and if there's no public comment, then I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay. I have opened the public hearing, and I apologize. I'll get this right one of these days. Mr. Enos is not here, I don't believe. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the motion, of the application? Anyone to speak against? The public hearing is closed. We move now to the corresponding ordinance. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve 02001-035-15.
Okay. We have a motion. Councilmember Henderson?
That's for a second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, gentlemen, register your votes, and that carries unanimously. Item number 15 is Z-018-01, and that is to consider the application of Bill Case for zoning change from C3 Commercial to C5 Commercial at 4605 East Bellknap. We open a public hearing at this time. Mr. Case, are you in the audience? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this request? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? There being none, I declare the public hearing closed, and we move now to the corresponding ordinance. Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve ordinance 02001-036-15.
Councilmember Markham?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Register your vote, please. And that carries unanimously. Item number 16 is Z-019-01, the application of Robert Baker for zoning from C2 Commercial to C5 at 1718 Eden Road. We open the public hearing at this time. Mr. Baker, are you in the audience? Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this request? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? There being none, we close the public hearing now and move to the corresponding ordinance. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we pass ordinance number 0-2001-037-15.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Councilmember Hurley?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval. If you will, gentlemen, register your vote, and that carries by unanimous vote. Item number 17 is Z-020-01, consider and take, or take action regarding the application of George Lambert and Nira Lambert for zoning change from C3 to C5 on property at 5813 East Bellknap. The public hearing is opened at this time. Mr. Lambert, are you in the audience? Would you like to address the council, or would you just like to be available if there are questions the council would have? Thank you very much. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this request? Anyone to speak in opposition to it? There being none, the public hearing is closed, and we move now to the corresponding ordinance. Gentlemen, Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve ordinance 02001-038-15.
Councilmember Jennings?
For a second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There being none, that carries by unanimous vote. We move now to the visitor citizen forum. Have any speakers' cards? There being none, we move to the next item, which is the announcements. Councilmember Williams, I believe you have an announcement?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to announce that this Thursday, June 28th, at 7:00 PM in this room, the council chambers, we will have a public hearing on the Daisy Lane property to discuss on the property that's been, Daisy Lane Street that was shut off. We'll be hearing neighbors to hear either pro or con against that to help us make our decision as to what we're going to do. That will be Thursday afternoon at 7:00 PM in these chambers.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements? Okay. There being no further announcements, we move to the boards and commissions. The first item is resignations of board members. Gentlemen, I have, and you should have a copy before you...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
We left out number 18.
I beg your pardon?
Did we leave out number 18?
We did. I'm sorry. Let's back up and do 18. Thank you, Councilmember Williams, for that. I saw your name in my notes in the margin, and I had your name beside the other one, so thank you for calling that to my attention. Resolution 2001-026-01 to give consideration and/or take action regarding appointment of substitute judges for the city of Halton City, Texas. Councilmember Williams, I believe this was an item you'd request to be placed on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Halton City has substitute judges to fill in for the regular judge when he's not able to perform his duties, and we had that, five judges listed on that. I don't think probably five judges is necessary, and so I would like to make a motion that we appoint Alphonse Kyle Knapp of 5712 Broadway Avenue to be our substitute judge.
Okay. We have a motion. Councilmember Everett?
I had a question for Councilmember Williams.
Okay. Can we wait until we have a second to address that? Councilmember Henderson?
I'll second that motion.
Councilmember Everett?
My question for Councilmember Williams is, knowing that we do have, currently have five substitute judges, why not choose one of them instead of appointing someone else?
That's just not one of them that I appointed.
Okay. All right. Do I, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
That's not the one I made the nomination. I didn't make the nomination for one of the five that's already there. I made the nomination for one that lives up on Broadway Street in Halton City.
My question to you is, why not choose one that we currently have?
My answer to you is, I didn't want to choose one of those.
Fair enough.
You're open to, you know, voting one way or the other.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Councilmember Patino?
Yes, this, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question's to Councilmember Williams. Do you want to elaborate as to the reasoning that you did not choose one that's already on the list?
I don't know, I don't know any of the five that are on the list.
Is this something that is better qualified or more dependable, or charges less? I mean, it's got to be something that, why we do not choose from the list that we already have.
I believe you feel, check the record, they can't charge less, they all get paid the same. And I've had this gentleman apply for the position, and that's the reason I made the motion. You all don't want to, you know, you don't have to second her, you don't have to put her on it?
No, I just, I just kind of want to ask the question, thank you.
I've not heard from any of the other five. I've heard from this one.
Any other questions? I have one to be sure I understand what we're doing here. In effect, if we vote in the affirmative on this, we will no longer use the five currently designated judges as substitute judges. Is that your understanding, Councilman?
That is correct. We'd be open to adding some later on if you'd like, if it got to be a problem where one wouldn't be enough.
Mr. Counselor?
That would be the effect of this motion. If the council approves it, then Alphonse Kyle Knapp would be your substitute judge, your only substitute judge.
And at a later time, if the council should decide to add others to that list, they would have the ability to do that?
At any time. That's correct. Your ordinance authorizes you to appoint one or more qualified persons as substitute judges, and with this resolution in front of you, this would rescind any previous appointments that you made.
Councilmember Everett?
Mayor, because Councilmember Williams did not adequately answer my question, I will be voting against Kyle Knapp for...
Would you like to redirect your question?
No, I will not.
Okay. Gentlemen, any further questions regarding the motion under consideration? Okay. We have a motion to appoint Mr. Knapp to the position of substitute judge. Gentlemen, if you will, register your vote at this time. Councilmember Hurley? Okay. The motion carries five to two with Councilmember Patino and Councilmember Everett voting in the negative. Now we get to the boards and commissions. I'm premature in jumping ahead a moment ago. We come now to item 19, resignation of board members. I do have a resignation. You gentlemen should have a copy. It's Mr. Raymond Soloski, who I had appointed as an alternate to the zoning board of adjustment. He has chosen not to serve in that capacity. I'm requesting at this time ratification of his resignation. If you will, cast your vote, and we will register it at this time. And that carries by unanimous vote. Do we have other resignations of board members? Okay, there being none, appointment or reappointment of board, to boards and commissions. Gentlemen, do you have any to... Gentlemen, do you have any to bring before us? I have one, and that is the appointment, and you should have that in your packet, to the SOB, the Sexually Oriented Business Board, Mr. James Sutton. And the data sheet of his information is in your packet, and I'm requesting ratification at this time. Will you please cast your vote in this regard? And that passes by unanimous vote. We have now item number 21, ordinance number 2001-040-01 regarding liaisons and the appointments of ex officio and other board members and those requirements. Councilmember Jennings, I believe you had requested this. Would you give us some background on what you're asking of us tonight, please?
Sure will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council met this Saturday in a workshop session, and one of the items on the workshop session was to go over the way that liaisons are appointed to boards and commissions within the city of Holton City. At that particular workshop, we did a lot of soul-searching as a group. A lot of ideas were exchanged, and the bottom line on that particular workshop was that we felt like the planning and zoning commission of the city of Holton City and the zoning board of adjustments are two boards that we deemed it very critical to have a council liaison present at those meetings. The other boards and commissions, it was decided that the chair of that particular board was charged with the running of that meeting, that certainly council members are not precluded from attending those meetings, and we would indeed encourage those that wanted to to attend those meetings. But as liaisons, we were charged with strictly observing the meetings. If we were asked questions, certainly, we would answer those questions, but we were not to get involved in the actual running of the boards or commissions. Over the past few years, it got harder and harder to attend those meetings and not get involved in the actual daily actions of the boards. We felt like our presence there at some times served as a crutch or as an impedance to the actual operation of the board, which is in direct conflict with what we want those boards to do. We want them to be the citizens' boards. We don't want them to be the council's boards and commissions. So at that meeting, we determined that we would remove the liaisons from all of the boards and commissions, with the exception of P&amp;Z and the zoning board of adjustments. In conjunction with this, while we were doing some research, we came upon the fact that there are three boards in the city of Holton City that have ex officio members, and they were appointed to different terms by different people, and they served under a different set of rules than any of the other boards and commissions. From the Code of City Ordinances, Article 2, Division 1, Section 2-103, it specifically states that an ex officio member shall not be entitled to vote, shall not be counted to make a quorum, and may not hold office on the board. In two instances along with this, these ex officio members are not even required to live in Holton City to be an ex officio member of that board. Excuse me, I'm going to have to switch pages. If that is indeed a true statement, and there's no reason to believe that it is not a true statement, the question would arise that, you know, what function does an ex officio member to a board or commission serve? Some people out there will say, well, that's easy. They offer suggestions, and they offer opinions about how the board should function. I certainly would have to agree with that statement. They do indeed have input on those boards and commissions. Based on that philosophy, however, if we should give any person who attends a board or commission meeting that offers any input whatsoever, either a regular or an ex officio membership to that body, because that's what they're doing, they're offering input. Sounds a little strange. By ordinance, our council allot eight places to boards and commissions. So if you're on one of those boards and commissions, and your eight places are full, and you've got 12 or 13 people that want to be a member of that board or commission, it would seem that the mindset is, don't worry, we'll go to the council, and we'll get some ex officio positions added here. Some boards need two ex officio members, some need three, and there's 12 or 13 of them out there that manage to get along with no ex officio members. Every city meeting is open to any person wishing to attend the meeting and to have their voice heard. I, for one, would have to question the necessity of making someone an ex officio member for no other purpose than to solicit his or her input. I would therefore move that we do away with all ex officio positions on the three boards to which they now apply, and this will place every board in the city on equal ground. They should all be treated...they should all be treated equally, and they should all operate under the same set of rules. And that was the reasoning behind addressing this problem in the first place. We had board and commission appointments that ended on June. We had some that ended on July. We had some that ended on October. We had some that were one-year terms. We had some that were two-year terms. We had people outside of the city council and outside of the city appointing members to boards and commissions in the instance of ex officios. And based on that, I would like to make a motion when it comes time, Mayor White, that we accept the ordinance as we presented it, as the council determined that it should be presented at Saturday's meeting, with the addendum that we do go ahead and do away with those ex officio members.
Is that in the form of a motion?
When you get prepared for a motion, yes, sir. And if we're prepared, that is in the form of a motion.
Councilmember Markham?
I was prepared to make a second, Mayor.
Councilmember Patino?
I was also for a second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Before us, any discussion on the motion? There being none, gentlemen, if you will, register your vote. And that carries by unanimous vote. Item number 22 is a moot issue tonight. The excused absence of council members, all of us are here, and I will say...tell you now, it's 9:30. The council will convene in executive session pursuant to Section 551.071, Section 551.073, and .074 at this time.